All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting in order. Mr. Would you call a roll, please?
Peter Burritt.
Here.
Wes Bryn.
Present.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnson.
Here.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Let's get the Republicans. And into the Republic for recent statements. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberated and justice for all.
And as always, a reminder about a conflict of interest. If you have one, if you let the council know before you vote. Need a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please?
I make a motion. We approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the June 7th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 7th, 7th council meeting.
Second. Correction, Craig. Remember, you noted that correction in the mayor's report.
Yeah, but I forgot what it was. No. That's been a couple of days ago.
Changing Peter to Petra.
Oh, yeah. We need to change Peter to Petra.
Without being serious.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Misty. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the June 10th special meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 10th special meeting to canvass the election results. Second.
Discussion. Great. You okay with those?
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between $271,446.60.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the current claims.
I make a motion to approve their current claims, the amount of $131,179.8.
Second motion.
Discussion.
I got a couple of questions. Hope I'm on the right one. I might have messed up. On page three, did I mess up? Page three. I'm kind of confused over that. Over that motel and, and the travel and stuff. It's. Was there more than you there?
I didn't go. You approved Karen Bingley and Carrie Pyle. And Carrie is paid out of three departments, so her expenses were broke down in three ways.
Okay. I guess that's all I need to ask, but. There's a couple more questions. Page 11. Didn't we already buy a saw cutter?
Uh, that was budgeted, so you probably remember talking about it during the budget.
And two, two departments.
They shared the expense.
Okay.
One.
And we bought two new tires for S29. I'm guessing that sewer plant?
Street.
Street. Do you know what 29 is? Which vehicle? No. Okay.
I know when it got flat. It's the white one. The new white one got flat out of the landfill hauling free dump week stuff.
So we bought two. Two went flat. Couldn't fix them?
At the time.
Oh, okay. Uh, Hyner. I thought we was putting. What page, Rock Creek? Uh, 13. That's always putting topsoil in the park. Says here is reseeded. I thought we was putting topsoil where all that dirt and stuff was.
You mean sawed?
Sawed, I meant.
We could not get any sawed right now. We tried everywhere you could try to get sawed.
Okay. That's all I have.
I got one question back on page three. On that new police vehicle. So did, did we, is there some money in the budget to send it somewhere for all the wiring and all the electronics?
We've budgeted $50,000 for the vehicle.
Okay, so it, okay.
So it's purchase price plus the install of the equipment.
So we checked into someplace to take it to that professionally does that?
Yeah. Okay, Sun Tech is what we're looking at in Rapid.
Okay.
Any other question?
Is that on? Okay, on page three, that's towards the bottom. Is that where you're looking at $21,000?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Communications from the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to talk to the council? All right. We'll move on to the 2020 audit presentation. Tracy with Kettle Thorstensen?
Good evening. Uh, we did the 2020 audit, uh, a few months ago now. I want to start with a thank you to Misty and her staff for giving us all the information that we needed. Uh, they were very cordial in getting us the information and we worked, uh, through the process to get some of it ahead of time and a little bit while we came down, um, to be on site. Uh, from a big picture perspective, uh, no significant changes in the accounting or audit standards that would impact how, uh, your financial statements look or what our process was. In the end, we ended up issuing what we call a clean or unmodified opinion. That's the, the result that you want as a part of the audit process. Uh, I did meet with the, the council before this, this public meeting and we went through some of the financial details from a highlights perspective, of course, 2020 had the COVID-19 pandemic, so there were a couple of, you know, activity changes related to some grant funding. The CRF funds came through. That would have been new and different. Uh, you would have had your Evans plunge, operations affected in terms of being closed for part of the year and only partially open for another part of the year, but all in all, uh, 2020 was a, a sound, uh, financial year for the city, considering, uh, what, what was going on. And, uh, from a, as a part of the audit process, we also take a look at internal controls and in doing that, we had two findings. One related to the preparation of the financial statements, which is a, a consistent finding that we have. Um, and, but nothing that we're suggesting to, to change. Just have to let you know that that situation is there. And then the second one relates to during the audit process, we did have a few adjustments to your financial statements. We've reviewed why they happened. They were minor, um, in terms of overall based on the, just, just some issues with either software or making some corrections that didn't quite, uh, get completely taken care of. Uh, so we've corrected those, but that was the extent of the findings. So, uh, overall, strong controls for the city and a successful audit process. So I can take any questions anyone may have.
Council have any questions? Does the public have any questions?
Could you relate our position as a city, uh, strength wise? Are you sitting good, sitting bad?
Yeah, and as we discussed in the meeting, you know, from a, a pure financial perspective, you know, the city is sitting in a, a strong position. We saw in 2020, you know, with the pandemic. We don't know what tomorrow brings, but as of today, you know, you're, you're sitting in a, in a solid position.
And from the finance office's standpoint, I'm, um, strong measures in control to make sure that, uh, the money is being managed appropriately, the oversight on the council. Uh, everything is as it should be.
As it should be. So, you know, I mentioned that we're two, two findings. Um, what we didn't have for findings was anything related to segregation of duty. So your accounting processes are strong and that you have, you know, the proper split between who's handling what transaction. So that's a, a positive for your finance office.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
Have a great day.
Thank you, Finance Department.
Yes.
Absolute big thanks to the Finance Department for what they do. It's not easy, I know, but, uh, excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you for recommending all of us, since we all be working together.
All right, next on the agenda is our public hearings. We have three of them. We have one at 7:20, 7:40, and 7:50. Uh, so I'd just like to continue into the agenda, taking off what we can, uh, until 7:20 for our first public hearing. So that would take us to personnel action. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through M?
I'll make a motion to approve personal action items A through M.
Second.
Discussion.
Where's Jack Peterson from? Hey.
Currently he's from which one?
Minnesota.
Minnesota?
Just, just so there's clarification, Jay and Kate, we have two of, with the same name. And Misty, would you go ahead and just kind of, so everybody knows why that's that way?
Uh, Allison is a part-time recreation instructor for some programs and she is a part-time recreation assistant instructor for other programs. The rate of pay is different. We tried to decide if it would be easier to put them both on one line or separate them. This is what we did, but.
And the reason why I asked her to do that was because myself, I thought it was two different people. Thank you, Misty.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
The motion passes. Ordinances, uh, first ordinance item A, a first reading ordinance 1231. Can I get a reading on, or a motion on that, please?
Should we? Do we need to wait until the?
Yeah, we probably should skip that.
Public hearing.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
All right. No, thank you for catching that. All right. We good with the first reading on ordinance 1233? Supplemental appropriation ordinance?
We should.
Can I get a motion on that one?
Make a motion to approve the first reading ordinance 1233 supplemental appropriation ordinance.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Good catch.
David.
Yes.
Wes Bryn.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnson.
Yes.
Bill Luken.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Takes us into our resolutions. Uh, resolution A, uh, 2021-13, a resolution of necessity. We got.
Got a hearing on that.
There's.
All right. So we don't have a hearing on 2021-15?
No, we do not.
Now let's take that one, man.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2021-15, bridge inspection resolution for use with South Dakota DOT retainer contracts, Jennings Bridge initial inspections.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Should be good on 2021-16?
Yep. Make a motion to approve 2021-16 contingency transfer resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Takes us into new business. I'd like to skip over new business item A. That's a discussion only. I've asked RCS Construction to address the council related to the West Oak Building. And I want to make sure they have plenty of uninterrupted time to answer any questions you may have in front of them. Uh, so we'll jump over that one. Uh, and that would take us to new business item B, a possible motion discussion to accept the 2020 financial statement and audit report.
Make a motion to accept the 2020 financial statement audit report as prepared. Excuse me, prepared presented by Kettle Thorson, Thorstensen LLP.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item C, a possible motion discussion to acknowledge and authorize the finance officer to transfer the land asset.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge and authorize the finance officer to transfer the land asset previously and referred to as Evans Plunge Overflow Parking and now referred to as Mobile Vendor Park from the Evans Plunge Fund 621 to the General Fund 101, legally described as all lots 18 through 21 in the south feet, south 50 feet of Lot 22, as determined by the west boundary line thereof, all in block one of central addition to the town now city of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, as shown on the platefound book one of Platts page 24, AKA Mobile Vendor Lot. The value of land transferred is $18,000.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I got a question. So in doing this, has there been any discussion? I mean, are, are we going to keep putting money into this thing? Or are we done putting money into it, or?
We're done putting money into it.
We're just getting it off the back of the Evans Plunge, basically what we're doing.
Evans Plunge was an enterprise fund and this is under a general fund now.
Okay. Put money down a hole.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item D, possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to transfer the, to the 2021 budget.
I'll make a motion to authorize the financial officer to transfer the 2021 budgeted annual operating transfers from 602 Water, $125,000, 604 wastewater, $125,000, and 612 solid waste, $10,000, funds to the 101 general fund of $260,000.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you say the reason we do this now, because we have a budget time, we wait till halfway through the year so this council can approve the budget transfers that you approve before we change the council over in July?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item E, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign, uh, as authorized representative of the city.
Make a motion to approve and authorize mayor to sign as authorized representative of the city, the state of South Dakota Financial Assistance Agreement for project number three dash four six dash zero zero two zero dash zero one six dash two zero two one. C R R S A Act, 13K Hot Springs Airport.
Second emotion. Discussion. Let's see, this is funding that, uh, the airport got through.
We call it CRISA.
Is that how it's?
That's what they're, CRISA is the acronym that they use. It stands for Corona Response Relief Something. Coronavirus Response and Relief Appropriate Act. It provides approximately 10,000 units to be awarded as economic relief to eligible U.S. airports. We've already been identified as eligible. And it can be, it's reimbursable, but it can be used to reimburse personnel expenses, uh, equipment, operating expenses, so 13,000 is the amount that the city.
All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And it's 7:20. Well, that will take us back to our first public hearing. A hearing on ordinance number, uh, 1231, a temporary ordinance regarding the issuance of local medical cannabis establishments, establishment permits and/or licenses. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? Counsel? Any comments?
I'll just, uh, get a little, give a little bit of an overview. Uh, the State Health Department, I think it is, has until October 29th to promulgate regulations regarding, uh, what was passed in initiated measure 26. Uh, until that time, we won't have the specifics to include in an ordinance to regulate medical cannabis sales. And so what this ordinance does, it's a temporary ordinance that essentially says we will not issue any licenses or permits in the interim period until we get that guidance and have issued a, uh, an, an ordinance specifying what the, those things that the state tells us we can specify. So this is a temporary measure. And so no, uh, no permits or licenses will be issued, uh, assuming this is passed.
But our lawyer's on board. He's, okay.
Hey, other questions? All right, let's close the public hearing at 7:22. Uh, and this is on the agenda for council to vote on. So our next public hearing is at 7:40. So we should be able to go back up to ordinances. Uh, first ordinance A, which is a first reading of ordinance 1231. Uh, that's the one that we just had the public hearing on. So if you could get a motion on that, please.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1231, a temporary ordinance regarding the issuance of local medical cannabis establishments, establishment permits and/or licenses.
Second.
Discussion.
You said, what, what was the date? You was thinking the state was going to toss out through October 29th?
October 29th is, uh, their required date.
Any other questions? Let's see, would you call the roll, please?
David Burritt?
Yes.
Wes Bryn?
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnson?
Yes.
Bill Luken?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes. We'll continue on with new business item F. A possible motion discussion to approve the revised five-year single-engine air tanker base land lease.
Make a motion to approve the revised five-year single-engine air tanker seat-based land lease agreement between the city of Hot Springs Municipal Airport and the state of South Dakota Department of Public Safety.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, the revised part, there was significant, there was no significant changes to the functionality of the agreement. There was some legal ease that, uh, one attorney felt better with than another, uh, but as far as the impact to the city, uh, nothing significant changed. It's essentially the same one that you, uh, approved previously with some rewording, uh, by the lawyers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item G, possible motion discussion to acknowledge the notification of raffle from a mammoth sites.
I make a motion to acknowledge a no, notification of raffle from the mammoth site for a handcrafted t-shirt quilt raffle, raising money for education and research. It's mammoth site.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item H, a possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement.
I'll make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $46,230.97 to the additional sales tax fund, 212-21200-42200 for preliminary design engineering for airport multi-unit T hangar project reimbursement revenue received from the AIP grant funding, number three dash four six dash zero zero two two dash zero one three dash 2020.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item I, possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $868.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $868 to the additional sales tax fund, 212-21200-42200 for Jennings Bridge replacement construction management reimbursement revenue received from big grant funding, PCN 06VF.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item J, a possible motion discussion to set a public hearing for April 6, 2021.
I make the motion to set a public hearing for 7:06:21, 7:30 PM to hear the, to hear the variance request from Eileen Oliger for property at 446 South Fifth Street.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Opposed?
Larry, yep.
Larry, you abstain?
Abstain.
Motion passes. New business item K, a possible motion discussion to approve the South Dakota Department of Transportation permits.
I'll make a motion to approve the S, South Dakota Department of Transportation permit to occupy right of way for Rotary Club's July 4th parade event between 11:00 AM and 12:30 PM on US Highway 18 dash slash 385. Second.
Discussion.
Where's it starting? Starts at the intersection of Battle Mountain Road and ends at the dip bridge.
Are we doing the yellow duckies this year?
I believe so.
Are we? Cause I haven't heard. I haven't heard.
Duck race. Duck race?
Yeah, they call it the duck race. I just haven't heard nothing about it. So I was kind of wondering whether we're selling the ducks again this year or not.
The fire quacker race will be on Sunday. All right, any other questions on new business item K? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item L, a possible motion discussion to accept the resignation of Carol Ann Schwarzenbach.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Carol Ann Schwarzenbach from the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Discussion. Carol Ann had texted me a couple of weeks ago. She and her husband are returning home to Texas. Oh. She's, um, stepping down from the commission and she'll be, she'll be missed. In the community first and on the commission second. We've, uh, she said, Dr. Schwarzenbach is ready to go back home. They came here from Texas. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have, we have anybody that's.
The, the motion passes. Uh, no, I haven't heard from Historic Preservation whether they're suggesting anybody to replace her. Take our lead from them. New business item M. New business item M, possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to reissue the maturing CD.
I'll make a motion to authorize the finance officer to reissue the maturing CD at First Interstate, number six eight zero one zero zero one zero seven seven, six oh two water for a twelve-month term at fif, point fifteen percent.
Second.
Discussion?
This was the best, best money we could get for a CD.
Yeah, I printed out a rate comparison for you there. If one of things, if you want to tell me, it was so bad, so. For that, for, we struggled with six months to twelve months, knowing that things probably aren't gonna get that much better and landed on twelve months if you're okay with that.
Wells Fargo is just sad looking.
Yeah.
Anything else? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? The motion passes. Under our last new business item N, possible motion to discussion to authorize the finance officer to reissue the balance in the Evans Pudge Mineral Springs Debt Service.
Make a motion to authorize the finance officer to reissue the balance of the Evans Pudge Mineral Springs Debt Service Reserve Account to South Dakota Fifth for a twelve-month term at point one percent.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
That was a very depressive hi that we all got from everybody there.
The motion passes. We need to have more public hearings, we're zipping through this agenda. Committee reports. Admin Finance, Caitlin?
Our next admin finance meeting is July twelfth, the second Monday in July at one PM at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Airport Advisory, Bill?
Next Airport Advisory Committee meeting is Thursday, July first, eight AM at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
Next meeting will be July eighth, seven PM at Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Meeting was called to order on June sixth at five oh two PM. There was an introduction of guests Beth and Bob Audet. Present were Steve Wienia, Mike Summer, Deborah Johnston, Scott Sobi, Joe Muller, Kara Hagan, Gerald Colgan, and Pat Light. Guests present were Uriah Llewellyn, Luke Royals, and Carl Boscher, Bockert, excuse me. The previous minutes were approved and passed. Old Business. Special demolition was start June third. An ordinance revision is on Brian Powers Hard Drive within Florida. New President Steve is to contact him to have that available by the next meeting so we can finalize the ordinance changes as soon as possible. New Business, Lisa Rutz with the new business at four oh one North River Street is seeking approval to hang a banner on the existing pole which is attached to the Rutz Building. Discussion yielded that this is considered a temporary banner. Mike motioned and Joe seconded to adopt a sixty-day timeframe for temporary banners, which would include this one. The motion passed. This timeframe would allow a business owner time to have permanent signage sought. Lisa Cruz with the new business at seven oh six Jennings, seeking approval for signage. Joe motioned to approve, seconded by Kara, and the motion passed. The Department of Transportation signage encroachment specs are as follows. Existing is a four and a half foot, fourteen and a half foot high and three feet from the curb. The new specs are going to be eight feet high and three feet from the curb. Letter from a city attorney, Goth, has the city proposing to move voting on certificates of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission to give authority to the city council so these decisions can, are covered under the open meeting transparency. However, the authority for the commission to vote on these items is written in the bylaws for the formation, for the formation of the commission. Scott will be providing the current dimensions which are posed for the upcoming highway project. Discussion was had on whether to continue with the ad hoc meetings, participation has been dropping. The board is seeking members to research and write on four or five buildings each to be used for information at a later date. Kara mentioned she would take the Flatiron, Muckuson Springs, Blue Bison, Medical Block, and City Hall. Discussion items, we were fortunate to have Beth Audet as guests. She provided information on how the HPC was started in nineteen seventy-four, by whom and how some of the things that are still in use today came to be. She talked about how Hot Springs received its main street designation. There were grant monies in the amount of over four hundred thousand dollars. Several publications were drawn up and printed. There are, there was money for the plaques on several buildings, the paper walking brochures, and the paper booklets on architecture. She let us know that May has been designated as Historic Preservation Month. The meeting was adjourned at six nineteen. The next meeting is July seventh, five PM here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah?
Devin, maybe Garland can correct me, but that guidance letter he wrote does not disqualify your committee from voting on those. It just requires you to post your agenda twenty-four hours in advance and prepare meeting minutes that are submitted to the finance office if you are voting. Is that correct? They're allowed to do it if they meet those open meeting guidelines.
Yeah, see, anytime you, any committee exercises any power, that's when it triggers those open meeting laws. So you're still allowed to exercise those powers. You would just have to follow the open meeting laws about publishing agenda, things like that.
Okay.
If you do choose to defer those powers to council, you can too. But it wasn't an absolute bar on exercising those powers. It was just that if you do, it just triggers open meeting laws.
Okay.
And along those lines, I still want to have a further discussion with you, Garland. The, the one point that the Historic Preservation Commission is concerned with in your guidance to us, you talked specifically about approving or not approving a sign. And that would be that authority that should be in the responsibility of the council. So that's the, the push point and how we interpret that correctly. It is certainly not intended in any way to take any authority away from the Historic Preservation folks. That's, that's not my intent with having this discussion. It's making sure that every step of the process we're doing correctly.
And I will say that memo that I put out was a, I guess you say, a general memo. There would be, of course, specific instances, like you just mentioned, where I could further, you know, discuss the matter or research the matter if necessary.
Yes, they, the, the signs are a good example because they do approve a lot of signs. So again, I want to continue to have that discussion with you, make sure that we're clear on it and have that discussion with Historic Preservation. But I assure you folks, this is in no way, this discussion is intended to take any kind of authority away from you that is given to you by the state. That is not my intent.
And with, with you saying that, I can see some of these business owners getting these signs made and not taking away from your committee, but you guys give them approval to do this and then the council comes along and says, no, we're really not on board with this because of state law or something, you know, I don't see a business person spend a bunch of money. And, and it really shouldn't have happened. I'm not saying it has, it's just, there's some of these committee decisions that are made that they're never, no one ever knows about.
I think the commission knows more about the requirements historically than the council probably would.
Well, I can drive them down Main Street and I can point out about two or three temporary signs that people are putting out in the DOT right-of-way that aren't legal, but we're allowing it to happen.
Well, they haven't come to the commission for those either.
Yeah, they're not gonna, trust me.
Okay, so we're at, we'll, we'll continue the conversation if anybody has any more questions for Deborah, but we've arrived at our seven forty public hearing time. Uh, and that's a hearing to discuss the request to amend Title Fifteen Land Usage, Chapter one fifty-five zoning code, to add RV parks and campgrounds to the list of permitted uses within the highway service districts. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment regarding that? All right. Well, close the hearing at seven forty. Counsel, do you have any comments?
Yeah, John, maybe you can help me out with this, when you, you call it an RV park, is there an acreage requirement?
Five acres.
Where's it in?
It's a, that big roots. Well, I miss the middle line.
Okay.
Recreation vehicle.
Yeah.
Did I mention we closed at seven forty-one, Misty? Seven forty, okay. All right.
So really, the only changes that are in the red, right?
Yes.
I got a question. There's a few mobile home parks in town that has RVs parked in them. And I'm sure they're not five acre. So is that legal for them?
You can put a mobile home in, and you can put an RV in a mobile home park for a hundred and ninety days.
It don't have to be a certain acreage like this, say?
No.
Okay.
All right, well, that takes us back to ordinance item B. My first reading on ordinance twelve thirty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twelve thirty-two to amend Title Fifteen Land Usage, Chapter one fifty-five, zoning code one fifty-five point zero zero two, definitions one fifty-five point zero zero four G and one fifty-five point zero two five B. Use is permitted in order to add RV parks and campgrounds to the list of permitted uses in the highway service district.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. The other RV parks, like, like say Kimosabi, are they all within the five acre?
Kimosabi is not in city limits.
Passed. Yep, it is just passed. Would that fall in line though, if it, if we annexed that? Say we annexed property on that in town. Well, I mean, would it fall, would it fall under the guise of being, would they be grandfathered in? Yeah, that's really all my.
Is it highway service district or is it something else?
State highway. But, but like you're saying, if, if for some reason city annexed it.
Why, I believe it's over five acres up there.
That's what I was kind of trying to get.
With the storage units and everything, I think it is, because they own all that.
So it's, it's at the five acres or greater?
Probably greater.
It is.
They have land behind the actual park that's part of their parcel.
Oh, okay.
They probably exceed it.
From what the fence line, I, I was kind of wondering whether or not that would fall into that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Roll call. Roll call, thank you.
Yep, you were.
You're right.
David Burritt?
Yes.
Wes Ryan?
No.
J.R. Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnson?
Yes.
Bill Lucas?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Ray Romi?
Yes.
David Turner?
Yes.
The motion passes. Well, that takes us back to questions for Deborah regarding her Historic Preservation report. Are there any more?
Oh, Deb, the business you said Lisa at seven oh six Jennings, is that what used to be the toy store and before that the parts store? Is that the building you're talking about?
Yes.
You know what it is or what it's gonna be?
What they wanted to do was to take down the metal or bonnet that was covering up old windows.
Okay.
So those have since been taken down.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I think in reference to what Garland was talking about. It's all.
Think all are.
Gonna hit me now. Yee-haw.
I, I kind of feel it's important what Garland was talking about, what, what the mayor, what everybody's talking about is just my opinion. I think it's important that these committees and the council coordinate, talk, talk. So we stop all this, he said, she said, feelings get hurt, people get hurt, you know, situations. I mean, we need to know just as much about what's going on in your committee as you didn't know what, you know, we think. I think I just, that's just my opinion. I think it's important. I think that we need to start doing that better. So that's just my two cents.
When you say better, what do you mean, what do you mean by better?
Something beyond these reports.
I mean, you had an agenda, right? When we go, we can see the agendas, we know what, what's on the agenda. Okay.
Yeah, I will be sending those to Misty.
Right, okay. Yeah. Yes, I just think that better open line of communication, that's, that's a better way of saying it, better open line of communication, you know, because I can see your point and I, but if I don't know, I don't know. How am I gonna be informed? So I know that's my responsibility, but sometimes it, it doesn't happen that way too. So, okay.
Any other questions for Deborah? Thank you, Deborah. Evans Pudge Advisory Committee, before Larry starts his report, I'd like to mention that this will be the last report that Larry gives as Evans Pudge Advisory Committee. Linda will be starting her new term on July sixth. Uh, and I've moved her to Evans Pudge Advisory Committee. So Larry, this will be your last one.
I didn't, wasn't able to make the meeting this week, so I acquiesced to Mr. John there.
All right, the next meeting would be July eighth. Evans Pudge Committee met on June tenth at twelve noon. Present were Mayor Bob, Neil Miller, guest, and Linda Varvel is a guest, the regular committee members, Tanner Ferguson, Chris Hansen, Kathy Wren, Cody Cross, Troy Lertsch, Tom Nas, Allison Ritter Bush, and Maris Smith, president. Fall River Health thanked the plunge for the discount pass for the nursing and the CMAs in honor of their designated week. Chris went over the lifeguard staffing that we currently have. Currently, there are only nine lifeguards available. They're continuously taking more applications and people to pass, trying to get people to pass the lifeguard test. Of the nine, two are emergency use only, meaning they have other jobs, but they would come in in the event of an emergency. She does have somebody wanting the head guard position now, which is a good thing. Currently, on her front desk staff, she has only one full-time person. The younger kids are filling up all the slide spots, so all the slide dispatch spots are full and she has an abundance of the fourteen-year-olds that want to go to work. So she's excited, at least we have people moving up. Swim lessons are going great, that's part of Kathy Wren's program. Swim lessons are going great. Um, that's part of Kathy Wren's program. Kids and parents all seem happy. At the high school job fair, thirty applications were taken that included a free pass to the plunge. If you brought your application back in, only three will return, and all three of them were under sixteen years of age and were hired as slide dispatchers. The wage rate is a critical factor in the hiring process. Once we get past this, uh, COVID relief money, and this will be an item to be discussed when we go into budget negotiations. Meeting adjourned at one seventeen PM. The next meeting is July eighth. At the plunge at noon.
All right, so we'll keep our questions for John until after our seven fifty public hearing. Uh, the seven fifty, uh, public hearing is a proposed resolution of necessity for the Martin Street Water and Sanitary Sewer Improvement District. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about that issue? All right, if not, we'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-one. And that will then take us to resolution. Item A, the two thousand twenty-one dash thirteen resolution of necessity. Can I get a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirteen resolution of necessity. Martin Street Water and Sanitary Sewer Improvement District.
Second.
Discussion. Well, this is something that we've been kicking around at Public Works for a while. Uh, there's some folks up in that area that, um, want to build homes and they wanted to put in septic systems. Uh, and Public Works is, uh, of the opinion that we don't want to have, uh, any more septic systems, uh, in city limits unless there is simply no other way to do it. Uh, but in this case, uh, we can put in a sewer line, uh, and water line to accommodate these folks. So that's what they're requesting. With that resolution.
This is initiated by them.
Yes, it is initiated by the property owners.
And it's just one step in the assessment process. There's several steps where to start it.
I, I may have missed it in the, in the material we had, but how many property owners does this represent in, in this district?
Four or five.
Four or five.
I think it's five, but Kathy Moss and her husband are most. Yeah, but there is other lots that could be there.
Other buildable lots?
Yes.
Okay.
So it, it is something that we're gonna grow.
So it's, yeah, an opportunity for growth for the community. Okay, good.
And with as much housing shortage as we have, we need to do all we can.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion passes. So that takes us back to, uh, the Evans Plunge Advisory Report, uh, that John gave. Any questions for John?
Thank you, John.
So that takes us to Parks Recreation, Beautification.
Do you wanna, you wanna jump back up to RCS?
If you wanna hold that off towards you.
Thank you.
I just didn't want to make them suffer much longer.
I thought they were falling asleep.
We, uh, we chatted with them and told them that, uh, it, it may be a while, but we're ready for them, yes. So, uh, first new business item, uh, is new business item A, a discussion only for RCS construction. Do we need a motion on that one, Misty? All right.
So counsel, I'm RC Skull, president of RCS Construction. This is Grant Herbener, project manager of this project. It's my understanding there is discussion about the Welsh, Welsh demolition.
Before you get started, Grant, there's just some things I want to remind the council of, uh, and remind the public of, uh, kind of as a lead in to what you're gonna talk about, uh, experiencing, uh, you know, when you were, uh, demolishing the building. So there has been public debate about whether the city did our due diligence, whether we hired enough engineers, whether we rushed to tearing the building down, whether we had other options. And I'm gonna read from four public documents, they are available to anybody that wants to, uh, take a look at them, uh, at City Hall. The first one is from Mark Fetzer, uh, structural engineer and consultant. Uh, it's dated December eleventh, two thousand six, and it has to do with the foundation review. And I'm not gonna read you the whole reports. Uh, I just wanna read what I feel are some, uh, important statements within each of these individual reports. And not to sway, you know, a narrative any particular way, but just to state what's, what's in these reports. So again, this is from Mark Fetzer, the first one, structural engineering and consulting, uh, back in two thousand six, uh, has to do with foundation repair. All of these are quoted. The soil below the main floor has been partially excavated at an earlier date, so even prior to two thousand six. Because the base of basement excavation is within five to six feet from the exterior wall, the excavation interrupts the normal bearing splay for stone foundation. Uh, I don't pretend to know what bearing splay is. You folks maybe will tell us. Now, over time, some settlement would be expected, which may cause a portion of the wall to collapse. The building should not be occupied until a repair has been performed or the excavation be filled in with compacted fill material. Each repair will require engineering analysis and design to make sure exterior bearing pressures and wall stresses are within acceptable limits. The above repair should be performed in a timely manner so that wall settlement does not take place. Can remind you, that's two thousand six. Go to two thousand thirteen, Albertson Engineering. Existing crawl space. Fetzer talked about it. Appears to be in process of attempting to convert crawl space into a full basement. Excavations within the crawl space appear that they may be seriously undermining the existing footings throughout the facility. This could potentially be a very unsafe condition, both for the existing facility and for the neighboring property to the south. Nothing happened for seven years. And a supporting document came out in two thousand thirteen. Another document in two thousand thirteen from TerraCon, uh, to our building inspector. Above the exterior of the building, the owners have excavated almost directly up to and beneath the exterior continuous stacked rook, rock masonry footing line, nearly undermining exterior wall support and support for the footing that supports the wall directly adjacent to the building to the south. The situation endangers not only the subject structure, but the building to the south as well. Based on our site visits and observations of the current state of the structure, we highly recommend the city of Hot Springs restrict entry to the building to those specifically trained in confined space and or hazardous space construction. The appearance and methods used to support the interior columns of the first floor suggest a collapse potential of the interior framework if the elements are disturbed. It is our opinion that excessive moisture variations in the subsurface soils or even low seismic vibration events could lead to bearing failure of the soils and subsequent damage to the structure or the adjacent, or the adjacent structure. TerraCon goes on to, uh, uh, say that Albertson Engineering, a structural engineering firm from Rapid City, performed a site visit on January two thousand twenty-three. Uh, that was the previous one that I read. Although TerraCon is not a structural engineering firm, we have reviewed their letter and agree with the recommendations provided. Two thousand thirteen. And the final one, January twentieth, two thousand twenty, again from Albertson's Engineers. And it's been suggested that, um, maybe we shouldn't weigh these as heavily because two of them come from the same engineer. Uh, the question was put to me directly, why is the city unwilling to hire another engineer to assess that building? My response was, we've got four reports from professional engineers, licensed professional engineers. If we do another report and it comes back with the same result, uh, will that end it or will there be a request for another report? How many reports do we need before we're satisfied? Uh, that the engineers know better than our laypeople, uh, what should happen with that building? So January twentieth, two thousand twenty. The excavations have resulted in slopes that appear to be unsafe and create a danger of slope failure that could cause a collapse of the building perimeter wall adjacent to the unsafe slope. The east exterior wall should be demolished. It is our opinion that the recommendations stated require urgent action. The entire building structure of seven seventeenth North River Street is unsafe and in danger of imminent collapse. There is no way to predict the timing of such collapse, and collapse could be a catastrophic, could be catastrophic and occur without any warning. These are the documents this council has looked at repeatedly and used to base their judgment about what should happen with that building. So I just wanted to share those prior to Grant, uh, sharing with us, um, what happened on the day that the building, in my opinion, did exactly what the, uh, Albertson engineer said it was going to do. It had a catastrophic failure. So.
Raise the mic up.
I'm gonna speak, I'm RC Skull, president of RCS. I'm gonna speak on behalf of our company. Um, I'll try not to repeat too much of what Mr., uh, Bob Nelson, the mayor, said, but, um, that was about half my notes right there. RCS's goal all along is safety. To bring this down safely and safe as possible, safety for our employees, safety for the citizens around that area, and safety for the building next door. With the fourth objective, to save as many sandstone as physically possible. And I believe we accomplished all four of those. Last count I heard, we had salvaged over a hundred and fifty sandstone block. No one was injured. There was no damage at the next, the building next door. So in my understanding, everything, every objective was met. Now, to back up a little bit prior to us starting this, this demolition project, we do hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars every year in demolition work. We do more demolition work in western South Dakota than any other contractor, probably ten to one. During our pre-construction review discussing safety and the demolition of this building, five of the six RCS partners came out to your site numerous times, some of us coming out three to four times to evaluate, to look at it, to fly a drone, to hire a third-party inspector to do analysis on the building next, on adjacent building. Um, I believe we took every precaution possible to analyze this building, including reading every one of those reports over and over and over. How it came down, it was a discussion, um, amongst our, amongst the partner several times. And we thought it was a very good possibility it could come down the way it did. And based on all the different engineering reports you had just heard, um, and I'm gonna re, and, uh, I'm gonna reiterate the foundation being undermined and at risk of compromise. These engine reports were completed by several different structural engineer firms from two thousand six, two in two thousand thirteen, and most recently in two thousand twenty. They were paid by the city, discussed by the city. And everyone lists that the building is severely compromised. You have three different engineers with four different reports, all saying the same thing, unsafe, and repairs should have been completed back in two thousand six. You know, the, the city has copies of all these reports, and I'm gonna re, reread the most recent paragraph that Bob read, a statement from Albertson Engineering from Mike Albertson, January twenty, two thousand twenty. Is in our opinion that the recommendations stated required urgent action. The entire building structure of seven seventeen North River Street is unsafe and in danger of imminent collapse. There is no way to predict the timing of such collapse, and collapse could be catastrophic and occur without any warning. We went over and beyond. We had two or three meetings with Mike Albertson discussing this project, discussing what he saw firsthand prior to RCS, uh, demolishing this building. Again, safety was our number one concern on this project, and I really firmly believe, Hot Springs, you guys are lucky that this building didn't collapse in the last fifteen years. And we, we demolish multiple buildings every year for the last thirty years, and we have, um, to see what we saw that day, um, was due to how, how it was undermined, how the foundations were undermined, and I think you're really lucky. I think our, our superintendent, who's been with us twenty-two years, Wes Hall, who does most of demolition projects, did an excellent job at bringing it down safely. That's all I have for RCS Construction.
Could you explain to us how long it took for that building to go down after you were manned and ready to start? Give us the days review of how, how it started.
Dates or, um? The days?
That day, that particular day that you started your.
The morning of Wednesday, June ninth, upon removing the first two courses of sandstone block, the wood beam, we believe, running west to east, bearing a lot of the weight of the second story and the roof being severely compromised, we believe, uh, fell, causing two-thirds of that front west face to fall in above the steel I beam. With, with that, with the way it fell in on top of the, you know, on top of the, of itself and the base course below where the excavator was sitting, the superintendent Wes Hall did what he thought was in the safety of everybody's best interest, and that is to get the building down as quickly as possible.
I will iterate what you said, because I had the opportunity numerous times in my bus to drive by watching y'all work. And when I saw what happened with that beam coming down, I concur with what you said. I saw it firsthand. It was quick and it was fast.
What's your opinion of, uh, two, uh, interested parties? Their plan was to do it for me while they were inside the building.
I think they would have killed themselves. I think my superintendent, who's done this over and over repeatedly on up to million-dollar demolition projects, was pretty shaken the way that building came down.
Dodged a bullet.
Over the last fifteen years, you dodged the bullet. You were, city of Hot Springs is likely, you guys don't have a huge liability, someone getting hurt.
It's, uh, build the wall that's adjacent, next to the next building, is that finished? Is that how you're gonna leave it?
No, we have a, um, or the city's recommendation that south wall was to stay. And, um, we've worked with the Jason, um, building owner, Steve, with how to finish that building. Finish that roof line coming down.
Okay, so there's some that seems to have broken off below the roof line. Does that need to be built back up or is that on the backside?
The south wall is, um.
It'd be the, the east wall, the east side of the south wall.
Yes, so, uh, yes, I understand. Um, no, it does not need to be built back up, and actually, he would like it seen taken down to the wood studs. His joists are actually about where you see the east side of the wall you're referring to. That is the top of his roof line. And so to eliminate the cricket on his roof, he would like to see it dump sheet across, and, um, Steve would like to see us take it down to that level on the east wall. It's about where you see that opening.
Right.
Let's take it down to that.
So it won't cause water to go between the walls, having that down that low?
Well. The roof line, he would like to see go over that east wall.
Okay.
Well, I for one just want to say thank you for saving lives, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just thankful none of you got hurt.
Yes. Thanks for putting the, the time and the effort into the planning and, and for being concerned about the safety of, of our community and your people.
Yeah, I mean, we honestly put, I don't want to say for hundreds of hours, but we put a ton of time and numerous partners driving down here to look at this bill, this project.
Just that being said, says the safety was a big issue with that building. Those gentlemen have a lot of years, a lot of experience.
On the day that the, the building collapsed, I apologize, I don't remember your name. You, you gave it to me. And, and then today, Grant, you and I were talking about the mortar that was between the stones and you had mentioned bringing a sample of that down.
We, we forgot the sample at the office, but we actually did grab some Walmart bakes of the mortar. And if you would like, we can bring it down for you next time we're down here, Mr. Mayor, but you can actually, the mortar is so deteriorated, you can crush it between your hands, which you should not be able to do.
That's right.
It's almost like sand.
And that's what I saw was so telling when you just simply closed your hand on it. There, there wasn't a lot of straining. You weren't trying to, you know, to, to crush it. You were simply closing your hand on it and the mortar, what I call the glue, literally disintegrated in your hand. So the, the suggestion that all that building needed was to be stabilized. There wasn't a recognition about the mortar that actually held every one of those stones together. The only way from a layperson's standpoint to salvage that building would have been hopefully not collapsing, but literally numbering every one of those stones, taking them off individually and replacing all of that mortar that's over a hundred years old with new mortar and put it back together like a Lego, Lego building. That, that was missed in all of the assessments that the folks that wanted to save the building said, all we got to do is stabilize the building and everything will be fine. It wouldn't have survived the, the stabilizing of it. Yeah, I agree with that. I've been in construction and roofing a lot of years and that's one of the very first things that I noticed about the building was that that mortise was just shot. You can see daylight through some of those blocks. So I agree with what you're saying, sir.
You, Grant, I talked to you right after that. You showed me what you guys found as far as the mortar and there's no exaggeration there as the explanation. But I have a question for you. Did you guys find any pins? Was any of that building pinned in any ways?
There, there was a few random pieces of steel that they stuck in there. It almost looked more like repairs than I.
Maybe a little closer to the microphone, please.
Though the only pins that we found, there were very few. It looked kind of just like repair pins. There wasn't, nothing was held together with any type of.
So it was as we spoke, the repairs had more to it than the actual building itself.
In, in, in most of those cases, I'd say all those cases, a lot of times our guys were up there doing some handwork and they weren't even jackhammering or anything. They were just pushing the blocks. There was nothing holding them together but gravity.
Thank you.
Everybody else have any questions, comments?
Just thank you for all your hard work. We dodged a bullet for many years and I'm thankful nobody got injured in the city. Nobody got in there and was messing around and got hurt. No city employees, no visitors or your staff. Thank you very much on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I and I would like to thank you and my request to the, to the public is I hope you recognize that this was not a rush to judgment. This was not, the building is, is getting in our way. We need to get rid of it. It was simply a recognition based on the, the engineering reports that we had available to assess from two thousand six. That regrettably, this building needed to be brought down for the, the interest of the, of the public safety. And I hope that for those who are willing to have an open mind, I hope maybe this sways their opinion a little bit and puts faith back in, in the city and this council that we did our due diligence. And we put safety of the public in the forefront. Craig has been adamant about that since the very beginning of this, that we, that's what we need to do. And I've said it before and I want to say it again, I thank you for taking on the responsibility and making the tough decision. And I know you've taken a lot of heat for it. But people that are open to listening to the facts, I hope this sways them. I, I hope there's still a lot of the opinion of don't confuse me with the facts. Because it makes it difficult for me to change my mind. This was the right decision. So thank you for it, counsel. I appreciate it. And thank you, gentlemen, for sharing you know, what happened on that day. I think it's important for the public to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. There is one thing I'd like to say, has not, you go ahead and sit down, but all the interest and enthusiasm that Welsh brought forward. It sure would be good to take that and put it towards some of the buildings we have here in town that do need help. Hopefully that enthusiasm does not evolve.
And we have been working through historic preservation and the building inspector. Three letters have gone out to owners of the the Bodega Building, the Fowler-Crummer Purdue Building and the Petty Building. Is that correct? Certified letters have gone out notifying them of the city's expectation of those. So we are taking steps that, that we need to take to, to get that taken care of. Okay. We were headed to Parks and Recreation before Wes suggested we get to the West Oak Building. So we're back to Parks and Recreation. This will be Wes's last report in front of the council. Larry will be taking over Parks and Recreation when the new council is sworn in.
We don't have a report. I covered my last meeting at the last council meeting. But I do have a request to this council. I would like to finish a project that we've been kicking around for several months. I'd like the blessing to go ahead. I got some young four-H people that they've been talking about helping with painting those concrete. I don't know what you'd call them on the Vidoq, just a short stem wall that goes up. It's got graffiti on it. And they thought that'd be a real good project for them. And I just kind of like the council's blessing to go ahead and try to get that project finished in the next couple of months. I've talked to Billy about it somewhat. He agrees. I mean, he thinks it'd be a great, great project. You'd take the work off the city guys.
About those wavy lines, right?
What's that?
You're talking about those wavy lines, right? Yeah, I, I hate looking at those things.
So do we need to bring that as a line item for, to vote on for, through the council as a recommendation from Parks and Rec?
We, we've already discussed it in my Parks and Rec for a couple of different times. It's just.
I would say if Wes has got things lined out and is in motion and he's already been chair, I would, I would say I would back you a hundred percent, Wes. There's projects that I like finishing after my terms in the past. I'd give you my blessing.
I just don't want to turn these young guys, these young, young people down because they're, they want to do it. It's free labor, it's free labor.
Good project.
Not just that, but the enthusiasm of helping their community. That's something, that's something to really promote.
I agree. Get with that supervisor, get her done.
Larry, would you put that on your Parks and Recreation agenda and work with Wes to get that accomplished?
I'd be honored to, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
Done this last year.
Yep, I want to, before I do my report, thanks Wes for everything you've done. Appreciate your hard work. Thanks and look forward to hearing from you again.
I won't stay away.
I was going to say you're still welcome at the committee meetings as a citizen.
I'll still wave to you when I see you.
All right, planning and zoning met June sixteen, twenty twenty-one, seven PM at the Mueller Civic Center with Don Alstead presiding. Attendees, Don Alstead, Johnny Hill, Dwight Weena, James Forbord, Wayne Hegeman, John Huddleston, Scott Sogi, Kerry Pyle, Caitlin Turner, Keith Negabour, Eileen Oliger. All actions recorded in minutes were unanimous unless otherwise stated. Minutes were approved, moved by Forward, seconded by Weena to amend the minutes as follows. Under new business, determine that city ordinances would override covenants be revised to determine that more stringent of either city ordinances or property covenants would be followed in reference to golf course covenants. Public hearing, Alstead opened the public hearing at seven ten. Temporary ordinance twelve thirty-one regarding issuance of local medical cannabis establishment permits or licenses. Alstead explained the procedure. For temporary ordinance is the same as for a permanent ordinance. The committee was to look at it, or look it over at this time in preparation for the state's regulations stated to come out in October of this year. We discussed tonight, October twenty-nine. He remarked that with nothing in place, no one would want to apply for it. Houston stated there is a separate committee working on everything. So we'll be ready when the state comes out with their regulations. Alstead closed the hearing at seven fifteen. He'll move it and recommended approval to the city council to proceed with the temporary ordinance draft, seconded by Forbord. Public hearing. Alstead opened the public hearing seven twenty to amend the current city of Hot Springs zoning highway service district, chapter one fifty-five point zero two five, adding RV parks to the authorized use to land uses on land zoned in the highway service district. Alstead explained there was no place in the city zone for RV campground. We asked if this was to be rezoned. Alstead replied, it was not a rezoning, just adding RV campgrounds to the current ordinance to allow this. So to allow this for this, instead of going to, going with the use permitted on review, anyone could still, anyone would still have to meet the requirements as to the size, et cetera. Also, I closed the, closed the hearing at seven twenty-five PM forward, moved to recommend to the council ordinance twelve thirty-two, revising title fifteen land use, chapter one fifty-five zoning code, dress one fifty-five point zero zero two, one fifty-five point zero zero four, one fifty-five point zero two five for approval, seconded by Weena. New business water user district, Far River Water User District easement request by Negabour at the Hot Springs Airport. Kane Negabour gave further explanation of the quest. Discussion included size and location of a new line fire flow with fire hydrant, FAA and airport advisory board approval. Hegeman moved to recommend to the city council approval of the easement to put in the new line adjacent to the trap shooting area outside the fence extending northwest of the airport in the general area, the hangars and office, seconded by Weena. Request from residents for dry path between the golf course and the neighborhood country club estates, the Alstead table the crest requests until the requesters can be present. An Airbnb rental allowed in golf course housing development. Upon discussion, it was agreed, there's agreed, no recommendation because it is the jurisdiction of the homeowners association to approve or disapprove. Adding flag poles and antennas to city ordinance one fifty-five point oh fifty-one. Initial discussion to be further researched. Residential beehive requirements, state regulations will be followed if request arises. Excuse me, old business additional living units ADUs, further discussion to be continued. Annexation, further discussion to be continued. Variance request, the variance permit for Oliger. Need two corrections. The zone should be residential A instead of mixed use. The requested structure is twenty-one feet into the twenty-five foot setback. Alstead moved to recommend to the council, city council approval for setback variance for a carport of twenty-one foot into the twenty-five foot setback needed by the resident Pat Oliger to be removed when no longer needed by said residence, seconded by Hill. Adjournment motion to adjourn at eight twenty-five by Forbord, seconded by Weena. Scott Sogi Development Coordinator, Building Code Official, next meeting July twenty-one time seven PM, Mueller Center.
Any questions for JR? Public safety, Bill, JR?
Okay, Bill, read this one.
I got it.
Messing with Bill because he wasn't here. The meeting was June sixteenth at one PM at the Mueller Center. Attendees, co-chair JR Huddleston, city administrator John Gregory, councilwoman Deb Johnson, chief Mike Close, Mike Summers, Dusty Pence and Frank Manier. Communications from the public, Mike Summers and Dusty Pence raised concerns over the stairs by the church. Not marked and no signs anywhere warning uses the hazardous conditions there. They were advised that the attorney's working on the proper wording to use on the signs. Suggestions may made to maybe paint the damaged areas as a warning of the hazard. Concerns over the other stairs were raised, like Patchen Castle Manor stairs, weed issues on the stone stairs leading to the museum. Summer stated the next deadline to apply for a grant is October. City will continue to review the possibility of capping the stairs by kidney springs. Standing items, PD update from Chief Close, made total calls for four hundred and eighty-seven. Several vehicles were damaged from the hailstorm and submitted to the insurance. Chief advised he was interviewing candidates for vacant positions that he has open. Chief advised he also has selected two part-time officers. Chief provided a monthly activity report showing four thousand nine hundred forty-seven miles driven, four hundred and thirty-seven gallons of fuel used, seventy-one dollars fifty-two cents in maintenance cost. The animal control officer used a hundred and five point three gallons of fuel, traveled seven hundred and twenty-four miles with maintenance of ninety-one point nine seven. ACL activity had ninety-eight calls, three dogs impounded, six cats impounded. Chief provided a monthly statistical report of arrest case reports and officer activity. Old business twenty-one dash oh seven daycare provider compliance administration fees. We tabled that for Bill's hard work that he's been putting into it to be able to continue with that. Twenty-one oh eight, South Dakota Wildline Fire contract using Mueller Civic Center. Charges would be two eight-hour fees for every space used unless there's cleaning, service utilities, other expenses incurred, then would revert to the full fare. Recommendation to council to approve the Mueller Civic Center as an alternate to Butler Park. New business, no trespass order and fees. John Gregory provided a draft no trespass order. An individual or business may use to file with a suggested non-refundable fee of fifty dollars for each one served. Each trespass order is specific. An individual or business must file a new non-refundable trespass order each time to be paid before the trespass order will be served and recommend to council for approval. State vets home contract, John Gregory provided a letter from South Dakota State Vets Home requesting use of the Mueller Civic Center as an alternate site in the event of an evacuation, recommend approval to council. in the event of an evacuation, recommend approval to council. Bloom Festival planning issues, traffic control notification request to be made to the sheriff's office and South Dakota Highway Patrol. Night glows will be held at the Butler Park Mammoth Site Golf Course. Uh, emergency management mitigation grants Frank Minner reported concerns over potential issues with needing to clean up forest areas close to the city and could be catastrophic and grants are available. Fireworks season, John Gregory provided a copy of the ordinance showing June twenty seven to the first Sunday after July fourth as the dates allowed for individual use. Fireworks are prohibited prohibited if the fire danger is very high or extreme hours permitted are eight A M to eleven P M. Uh, finally, change in public safety meeting dates. Uh, request sent to the council to approve changing the public safety committee dates to the third Monday of the month at ten A M. Adjournment at one fifty, next meeting July nineteen ten A M, Mueller Civic Center.
Any questions for J R? Thank you, J R.
Thanks, J R.
Public Works, Dave, Craig.
June fifteenth, one P M here at Mueller Center is when we had our last Public Works meeting. Those in attendance, Jason Correll, Waste Water Plant, John Gregory, Craig Romi, Rob Nelson, David Johnston, Brenda Kamatch and Trace Sebastian. We won't go through the whole list, beans there's about fifty items. So what we're gonna do is hit new business real quick. We discussed the po- uh two hour parking limit that was brought forth to Craig. We discussed it, we don't, we did not really uh see the value in 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 doing that for the simple reason we'd have to have somebody. We'd have to have a traffic, traffic police officer and um the cost and everything else going along with that, but the benefit um just it 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 just kind of died on the table. Would it be a good idea for uh folks to keep in mind to take up a parking spot and uh on uh a two hour time limit is is nice, but uh some cars are being parked and vehicles are being parked. Sometimes there's actual just trailers there that's being used and being staying overnight. So really, just as a reminder, have some courtesy for other folks. Uh, find a place for your unused vehicles and trailers and so forth. Uh, number two, um belly, belly drive drainage complaint by one of our ci- uh citizens here in town. We're looking at options for that. Um, discuss the relocation of um T box. At hole number three, Bob Nelson gave us a pretty much report and a plan which we got this. Everything will be met, there would be really no cost to the city. So uh that's a good thing. Uh, we're needing some totes and these totes would be our trash totes, big green and some of them are dark brown plastic totes. They're at this present time eighty six dollars per a tote and we need about two hundred. We repaired the damaged ones the best we can and well, pretty much most of them are becoming just parts. That's about it anymore. So we will be discussing that.
What, what are they, can I, can I ask, what, what are them, where, where do they use those totes at?
Well, it's our trash totes.
They're trash cans, okay.
That's what they.
That's what you lost me at the tote, I'm like.
Yeah, and at eighty six bucks a piece, we do keep rebuilding up. The guys have gotten real good at and uh there, the inner art part of that is coming out because they got some pretty good ideas on repairing them. But what is left is pretty much just parts.
And apparently weren't there, reported like fifty new building permits for new residences this last year?
Yes, that is correct. So um not blaming that we have wind, rain and everything else that uh some folks uh don't quite see them around a bush, run into them. So they are taking a beating, but we are looking at that. Uh, that'll be an ongoing discussion. Um, we also discussed a new full-time employee possibly um for uh uh utilities basically, because it'd be back and forth between wastewater and water streets. Uh, so basically that's a all-around person, but um we like the idea. We, we like the person. Don't normally give out employee names, that's why I'm not giving out names and I don't usually give out personally any names of uh citizens that come to the city for requests or complaints. See, we discussed the multi-water service from a single curb stop. We do believe we have a answer to that and we're gonna move forward with that. Delivery date on that camera, so the sewer inspection camera system that we ordered. We were just waiting on delivery, which should be pretty short by now, wouldn't it be, John? Okay. Um, see what else can we? Okay, water wastewater treatment plant, looking at maintenance items uh being addressed and uh required. Um, we will be discussing uh probably budget increase for twenty two. Putting all our stuff together to get some of that more information for the council. Other pending utility items. There's that's all over the board as far as that goes. Uh, code enforcement, we touched on that. Um, making sure that public property is not being used for storage. And then old business, we touched on uh the digester lid and all that's gonna go with that. A contractor will be needed to put that together and touch up the paint. At that time. That's pretty much it. Well, show which we discussed and different things that we discussed have been touched on and voted on. So uh our next meeting will be June twenty ninth at one P M at the Mueller Civic Center. And all of the citizens and other council folks are welcome to come.
I have something I want to add to that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
On that parking issue that was brought to me, some businesses down there are having problems with people parking because there's not a lot of parking down by the depot. The city has two city parking lots down there. And the one to the south side, the small one, is mostly used by the Evans Hotel. Everett lives in Evans Hotel has a parking spot according to Sheriff Evans. The only reason they cannot park your car in any of those parking spots is they don't have insurance. And a lot of those cars never move out of that parking spot. So it's creating a a problem for the businesses down there to have enough parking area. So yeah, not great. Mayor Nelson, we'd have to have somebody that went along and checked them day to day to see if it's, you know, using the two hour parking or not. So it's just something that is brought to by the business to me and I passed it along. Thank you.
Any questions for Dave or Craig?
So actually, we're gonna gain some parking now where that West Oak building was.
Yeah, but we don't own that.
That's, that's still private property.
Whoa. So then are we gonna put a fence across there then, or are we gonna let the business to the next to him fight it out with the people that own the property then? Well, how's that gonna work? Well, there's my point. So if people accidentally park there.
Not our problem.
That's exactly.
I don't and and I don't really want to go there. I don't want, uh, that is a private property issue.
Maybe you guys better look at parking meters.
Well, it's just, it's just like that, that building that's close to city, all the city ended up with that and sell, sold it. It'll probably be the same way with this fence like this, you know, Johnson's won't pay for nothing. So I just go back to the city.
I just hope we don't have any plans of putting a fence around it anymore expense.
I don't see the city, well, my personal feeling, I guess I should say first is I do not see the city spending any more money there as far as it being a parking lot or anything like that. The property owner would have to come and file a complaint if it's an ongoing problem for them. But um as far as us enforcing uh anything on that property, I don't see it happen.
Good.
It does not mean to say don't come to the city council and request whatever, but uh it is not the city's place to be enforcing stuff on private property or spending money as far as that goes on putting a fence. But it, that question has come up.
I have a question. Talked about the two hour parking thing, right?
Yeah.
Um, whatever happened with the ideal of the animal control officer doing writing tickets, doing things like that. Enforcing some of those codes. Um, didn't we have, wasn't I mentioned sometime, Bill, at one of the public safety meetings?
Yeah.
I mean, what's?
It, it's, it's part of the discussion.
It is, okay. I just wondered, thank you.
Any other questions for David Prig? Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, that brings us to the golf course advisory committee. I'd like to say that uh our dog ate the report. We don't have one, so I can't. So I'll just own up to the fact, um I didn't get one prepared, so I'll report at the next council meeting. That brings us to finance officer, Misty. Yes.
I wanted to provide council and the public an election update in case you didn't get the news. Um, and then to break down some numbers, we had a joint election with the school, our Ward One um had a race, there are seven hundred and eleven registered voters at the November general election. Ninety voters came out to vote, that's twelve point six percent. Um, and uh the voting results were um Craig Romi by three. Congratulations and uh thank you for running and Craig will continue to be our Ward One representative for the next council that many of you have updated comes at the next meeting in July. I want to thank the candidates that ran, uh the voters that came out. The workers that spent their day at the polling location and the partners at the school uh for running a great election. I wanted to talk a little bit about the S D P A A annual invoice that you approved in the bills in between. Typically, that renewal is in February and you see that claim at that time. It was a little late this year, but they've been working on providing breakdowns per item. Uh, so instead of just having uh equipment or vehicle list with a total dollar amount. They now provide us a breakdown of the actual premium for each one of those buildings, pieces of equipment or policy type coverage, whether it be liability um or something else. So that is going to create a new ability in the finance office to more accurately break down or reallocate the distribution of those costs. Some of our departments will see a change in the twenty twenty budget, but it will be more accurate. Uh, a new federal holiday was declared very quickly. Um, I, I, it wasn't on my radar, it, we learned about it late Thursday night and it was Friday. Uh, it's for Juneteenth. The governor made her declaration uh on June seventeenth. She announced a holiday for state workers on Friday, June eighteenth in honor of Juneteenth. In response to the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, which was signed on June seventeenth by President Joe Biden. Uh, the new holiday will be celebrated every year on June nineteenth. City policy is to follow the state. So any employees that worked on that Friday will be eligible for holiday pay similar to all other holidays. And moving forward, uh we'll recognize that in our annual recognition of the holidays. Um, the budget workshop is scheduled for this Wednesday in Rapid City. Uh, that's June twenty third. We have a good number of members that'll be attending and looking forward to that workshop. I've gone a few times, but every year I learn something new. Um, I personally will be out of the office Thursday and Friday, so out on Wednesday at the workshop and then out Thursday and Friday. Uh, other office workers will be available if you need them. Uh, the elected officials workshop will be the fourteenth of July in here. If new elected officials or existing elected officials are interested in attending that workshop, I need to R S V P by July first. And I'm not very good with goodbyes, um but I wanted to share uh a piece of a speech that Theodore Roosevelt prepared um in nineteen ten. It's in my house on my fridge as a reminder to myself and my family. And after recent events, um and some of the heat that some council members have taken, I really wanted to share it with those of you and thank you. And also um share the thanks that I have um for the good intentions that I see each one of you as council members make and have in your decisions. So Theodore Roosevelt delivered, uh and this is just a small portion of the speech. I encourage you, if you're interested in what this says, to read the whole thing. He delivered it in Paris, France at the Sorbonne, which is one of the first universities in the world. And it's uh this excerpt of the speech entitled Citizenship in a Republic. Really made me think about some of the things that you've gone through and uh how much I appreciate what you're willing to do for the city. So not my words, but here's part of the speech that I have in my house. Um, it's not the critic who counts. It's not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who's actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs, who come short again and again, because there's no effort without error and shortcomings. But who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause? Who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat. So I know your face isn't marred by dust and blood and sweat, but it's not easy. And the time you commit and the efforts that you make don't go unnoticed by me. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Miss.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any questions for Misty? All right, city administrator report, John.
Now he needs to get closer to the highway project. The DRT. I S D for last meeting with the final waiting provisions for security growing. In the side of the traffic control. Rich Doctor spoke about the volatility in prices right there, particularly outdoor lighting settlements. I see the mortgage rate D C is rolling pretty high. I mean, he's been speaking. The whole government is surprised. My concern is we're gonna wait for this and see what happens with the Ben Lay and set him this. I S D for vision and just finalize their items for four or eight permits. Maybe last night we gave their permit. We're hoping that the same place is coming. With the future, we're talking about an airport industrial park with the housing options, not even associated with that. Still need the rest loans to generate some funding. Black Hills Council love the government's good presentation being made. The government G O P G O needs that. The president submit information about the project, the rural access to better resources. Bugs and changes. Our airport has been extremely busy by Detroit for all work we're doing or handling events of airport maintenance. Our new airport industry called Rick Brett Box will be on board starting next Monday. There's very much looking forward to it. A recent change with our. T men of senior to T higher, a minor design change. The doors of the hydraulic doors before unavailable from the ninety five. The biopile doors, it's a change order that actually results in savings to us. Probably work is being done by a hundred more kind of gentlemen working out there and also a bit of assistance. The golf course guys that are trying to really work. Where every dog's family their home out there that they're about. Street parks and fill these guys and really busy on how we make this work.
I'm sure you've seen them around in your backyards, they're doing a good job, they're still working on getting some of the tree ones and things cut back. Our parks people have been working on the sprinkler system and all of our parks and getting the mowing done, a lot of preparation work is going. Forward with the Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival that's coming up this weekend, so Centennial Park is. It's getting everything done at first this week. Free dump week was a huge success, it was the biggest one they've ever had, over a hundred. Vehicles per day. Used it except for the final day where they had about sixty. But that was the biggest biggest free dump week we've ever had. The West Oak salvage items went well, we did keep the red door, everyone keeps calling about the red door, yes, we did save the red door. And we also saved the sandstone blocks as we indicated that we would. The June eight hailstorm. Our guys got called out that night in the storm and had to do some response calls, they also went out the next day and did some cleanup work. On June tenth, the big storm that never happened, we had a lightning event that took out one of the panels at the wastewater treatment plant and also knocked out a sprinkler here at the Mueller Center. The Valley View area has a. Is a drainage problem that we identified after this big rain event. We're looking at putting in some storm drainage piping dying way across that road to take care of some of that. Our depot now has an AC unit, it's installed and working. We're looking at upgrades on the clock. Some repair quotes on that now. Got a meeting with Black Hills Energy next week about getting power to that building. From. The west side of the street instead of it coming across the top of the street and going in a window the way it does now. We're gonna say that Evans Point is doing the best they can with the staffing shortages that they're facing. They did get to add a head lifeguard. They're still having trouble staffing these positions. They're constantly running advertisements, they're constantly trying to train people. There is a staffing shortage all around this town and all around the country. Our library has a new head librarian Peggy Exum is on board. And I certainly did thank her for returning to Hot Springs to assist us. Black Hills Energy has a big improvement project, it's gonna be happening across National Avenue from the Golden West. On the back of. Morning sunshine building, they're gonna bury that electric and get some of that overhead electric back there that's really outdated. Go on. Use that use that big transformer they've got there, that's golden ones. God is working on the continuing nuisance violations. They said I noticed this this past week on overgrown yards with weed issues. And we've already had one response over the weekend, so that was really nice to see. The Bodega Building. I personally followed up on that a couple of times, he has gone back to work on that building to meet the. Request with the D M T for July first deadline. And the Teddy Building now has a contractor getting another building permit, going back to work on that. We still have not heard about the foul building if anyone's been resigned. All the departments have begun budget planning for our meetings coming up. In July for the twenty twenty two budgets. And lastly fireworks is July third about nine thirty PM. Fire danger allowing, we've mowed the merf and installed the new. Firework cannons and we're ready to go. All I got.
Any questions for John?
John. You said we got rid of the stuff from the West Oak building?
Said we removed the items and stored them from the West Oak building.
I like to mount, we got rid of them already, okay.
Any other questions for John?
I I hope that. That nuisance weed ordinance, I I hope you guys are working pretty serious on that, because man, there's a lot of ice swords in town.
Got quite a list. Really. I know they record this and people watch it at home, please, yes. You are in any good health, there is a lot of folks out there, our seniors. And those that are disabled, but if you have, if they're a neighbor, a couple of houses down, please take. You know, take a moment, talk with them, see if you can help them. We do it in our my neighborhood. Just kind of. This time of year when it gets hot like this, our elderly being out there, it creates a health problem, so any kind of. Any kind of help that they can get. Would I'm sure would be greatly appreciated. And the community would appreciate it also. That's it.
Thank you, John. I just have a couple of things for everyone tonight. As John mentioned, this year's Fourth of July fireworks have been moved from the night. Or moved to the night of July third. The decision was made in mid May to coincide with other Fourth of July events that were under consideration for moving from the fourth to the third. Moving fireworks to the third resulted in the need for the city employees responsible for putting on the fireworks show. To redo their work schedule to make sure there are enough people on a hand to fire off the fireworks. The other Fourth of July events didn't get rescheduled, but rather than ask the city employees to once again reschedule their work time and vacation. I made the decision to keep the city fireworks display on July third. The change from July fourth to July third was well intended, and I hope it won't detract too much from your July fourth celebrations. July second, there will be a street dance at Centennial Park organized by the Rotary Club. Sunday, July fourth will be the usual firecracker mile, five K, ten K race starting at Chautauqua Park. The Fourth of July parade through downtown Hot Springs, starting at eleven AM. The community picnic at the Mueller Civic Center, starting at twelve thirty PM. A show and shine at Centennial Park sponsored by the Black Hills Cruiser from one PM to three PM. And the fire quacker duck race downfall river starting at two PM. There are great and fun activities planned for the Fourth of July weekend for everyone to take part in, have a safe, safe and happy Fourth of July. The next time we meet as a council, we'll have a new look. I want to congratulate Alderman Romi, who won reelection to Ward one. And welcome Linda Varbel, who ran unopposed in Ward three. Linda will replace Wes, who chose not to run for council in Ward three. Dave in Ward two and Deborah in Ward four also ran unopposed. All of these folks were elected to two year terms on council. And finally, I want to thank Wes for serving on city council for the past year and for his previous years on council and wish him well in his new endeavors. You have any questions for me? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? The motion passes.